Now entertain our public hearings, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first public hearing item before you tonight, item number 27, request of the Board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider approval of the Sixth Amendment to the Southwood DRI, to redesignate 3.4 acres of property at the intersection of Tram Road and Artemis Way from mixed-use residential to mixed-use educational and institutional to allow for the construction of 20,000-square-foot daycare facility adjacent to Tallahassee's classical school. Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item, and staff is recommending your approval of Option 1.
All right. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mrs. Chair, I'll move Option 1.
What point of order? I think you lack quorum at this moment.
Oh.
Well, now you have quorum again.
We do have a quorum.
That was a good motion from Commissioner Cummins, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes unanimously with Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Dozier out of the chamber. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item requests the Board conduct your first and only public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance amending the Leon County Land Development Code to include the coordination of the Big Bend Continuum of Care and the establishment of any transitional residential facility and to exempt cold night shelters, temporary cold night shelters, from the definition of the transitional residential facilities. This ordinance, Commissioners, follows your previous policy direction back in May. We have no speakers on this item, and we are seeking your approval of Option 1, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Maddox.
It was the Vice Chair. I mean, I'm sorry, it was Commissioner.
Are there speakers, public speakers on item?
We have none.
Okay.
It was Commissioner Jackson I seconded, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Jackson made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Maddox.
We may have a speaker.
Okay.
While waiting on that speaker, Mr. Chair, I wanted to, I believe, Mr. Administrator, that Commissioner Minor brought this to us, I believe it was, the full insecurity? Oh, oh, okay, one moment. All right, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have two speakers just in, Kristen Olsen-Doolin.
Okay. Chair recognizes Ms. Olsen. Ms. Olsen, if you please state your name and address for the record.
Kirsten Olsen-Doolin, 1225 Talbot Avenue. Sorry about that, if I turned it in to the wrong place. Nice to be here this evening. Thanks again for all you do for Leon County. I live half a mile from CityWalk Shelter on Bayhand Drive. As you know, that started as a cold night shelter and suddenly became a full-blown shelter. Since my neighbors and I have experienced with this in the city, when I saw this on the agenda, I thought I'd come down and tell you a little bit about our experience. I ask that actually you take another look at this ordinance and maybe add some more details and refine it. I do like some of the additions to the ordinance. I love the addition of the outreach to the neighborhoods and homeowners' associations. However, I would like to see a notice requirement included so a broad section of residents know what's going on. The notice could include signage, mail, distribution on neighborhood email lists and Facebook pages. I also like the addition of asking for detailed staffing plans for a facility and information on client-to-staff ratios. The fencing's great, the lighting's great, and that will help minimize visual disruption. I would also like to see, though, some qualifications added for the staff that works there. There are several other omissions from what we have personally experienced that I think should be included in the ordinance. For instance, cold weather shelters should be included in the process, not cut out. The process to sign up facilities as cold weather shelters is done in advance, so it is possible to notify neighborhoods and nearby businesses. A cold weather shelter may be needed several months between November and March. Neighborhoods and homeowner associations should not be surprised, like we were, when suddenly we have a new facility next door. When the shelter opened up near us, it's not like we didn't notice shelters made people leave in the morning and line up to get back in at night, so many residents, since they have nowhere to go, just hang around all day. That's why I think adverse impact should be considered from a broader area, not just 500 feet, and it only takes an average person about two minutes to walk 500 feet. Secondly, for both cold weather shelters and full-time transition residential facilities, there needs to be more consideration upfront of the varying needs of the clients in relation to nearby neighborhood schools and businesses. For instance, we were shocked to find out that the shelter accepted sex offenders, drug addicts, recently released violent felons, and seriously mentally ill. The facility is across the street from a daycare, next to several neighborhoods, and within walking distance of small businesses. One more omission from the ordinance is who will provide oversight of these facilities, either cold weather or full-time. Minimum standards should be maintained, and there should be accounting mechanism of inspection and enforcement defined in the ordinance, and then it could be covered in rules and detail. To my knowledge, the Big Bend Continuum of Care does not conduct audits or inspection of these facilities to make sure they're being operated properly with qualified staff. As you know, somebody died in the CityWalk facility, so we're very concerned that they all get proper care. Thank you for considering my input.
Thank you, Ms. Olsen. Is there another speaker?
Next speaker, Frank Doohan.
Mr. Doohan, if you'll state your name and address for our records, we'd appreciate it.
My name's Frank Doohan. I live at 1225 Talbot Avenue, and I read the ordinance. I was impressed with a lot of it, but it does not go far enough. A lot of the loopholes that we have to deal with at CityWalk on a daily basis are going to come up to bite you guys if you don't sit down and take care of it. They will simply do what they want to do as they want to do, and you will end up paying for it. Please be very careful in your approach to this group. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there one others? Okay. All right, that concludes our speakers, their input for this particular item, the first and only public hearing. I'm curious and wanted to field Commissioner Minor's thoughts, if he had any. And I'm also aware, in the North Monroe area, many of the transient, growing transient population there, we see properties and addresses which once upon a time were upstanding community pillars, if you will. They begin to erode in their luster as well as their meaning to the rest of the community. And I was just pondering, as I was looking at this item, what might be your sensitivities regarding this item in particular?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you know, I know I've got some experience working in the nonprofit field with Second Harvest and providing, you know, meals to people in need and basically studying a lot of the areas that pertain to this. So, I mean, I think with what we've been doing this evening, you know, with the 32304 agenda item, and I think that's going to be very important for us to work on, this one, I'd like to hear some of the other comments from the other Commissioners, and then come back to me.
Okay. Commissioners, we've seen Commissioner Jackson's Pensacola Street area. It's dissolved, dissolving, we've heard, on the CityWalk issued during the summer, the spring. Homelessness is a spreading thing. These definitions about what's a transitional, what's a homeless, what's a, we know that the behavior in the aggregate out of facility, living and congregating, is unique to specific areas. And perhaps this is something that is a workshop or something that we're going to do with North Monroe up there by I-10. Are we going to be serious about what is evolving over by TCC in Pensacola? But this item tends to nudge elements of concerns that are associated with those quarters. So I didn't want this just to come and we just say yea, 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 you know, just go. Really sincerely, genuinely, we have something, because we're probably going to need to model something really unique in the future about transient living. And we got the NIMBY issue, people come and say, "We're not in my backyard." And we all are great Christians and all, and do unto others as you want others to do unto you, and love your neighbor as you want yourself, but not in my backyard. And how do we balance this? Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, you know, I brought this up at our previous Commission meeting. And I think that at some point where we, Mr. Administrator, can I put you on the spot? We were looking at open camping and other right-of-way type issues that have dramatically, pedestrian traffic and a danger to safety dramatically affect that area in between Jackson Wolf and Highway 90, Apple Yard Drive, and all the way up to basically Ocala Road, probably even further. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there'll be a very comprehensive item coming back to you in December on seeking your direction relative to a number of policy issues concerning the homeless population. And so with the County Attorney's Office, we've been working on that diligently. Again, we'll be bringing that back to you. It will address several issues related to the management of that and some of what you've been seeing in the community and that sort of thing, so that we can get a, develop a proactive policy related to a lot of that. Services, we're good. We're not providing all the services, obviously, that are in need, but we also have a regulatory framework that we'll be bringing back to the Board for your consideration. As far as this item goes before you today, Commissioners, again, this is a pretty straightforward definitional item. You'll recall back in May when you gave us the direction on this item. We had a pretty extensive conversation about the citing of homeless shelters in our Land Development Code, and we put things in place. Side note, we've never had a shelter that has come through in the unincorporated area for, to be cited. But again, it's very proactive. If and when we do, we will have, again, a regulatory framework in place, including notification to community members and businesses and all of that sort of thing, which are included in our LGRs at this point in time. Again, we're mixing some of the, understandably, some of the terms are being a little bit confused here. When we talk about temporary cold night shelters, we're talking about our temporary cold night shelters and to the ones that we open up as a part of emergency management and that process. So we wanted to make sure that those were not confused in our land development codes and didn't require the same approval processes for citing a homeless shelter or other transitional facilities, that sort of thing. But again, I think we're well postured here on this item, Commissioners. And again, you will have a more comprehensive policy discussion related to some of the other issues related to homelessness at your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. County Administrator, thank you. Forgive me, that was a very quick meal, so I'm still recovering. I'm choking on stuff, and if I have to take a moment, I forgive you for that. So, Mr. County Administrator, you were getting to one of my questions, that some of the issues, the good issues that Mr. Doohan brought up, those would be covered either by the Land Development Code in a normal process for notifying residents when a proposal comes in. So you just mentioned that. But I also wonder if the, if the staffing plans and other things, we don't typically address those types of issues, and I'm wondering if we could even contemplate those types of issues within, within our growth, you know, sorry, within this type of policy. Those really need to come in other forms? Am I, I'm not saying this correctly, please, sir, help me out here.
Sure. And we, it really would depend, I hate to say, but in terms of whether it's a new facility or an existing facility and that sort of thing, depending on what regulations would be employed, there are state statutes and other parameters that we go by in terms of the facilities themselves. I think the staffing issues are under the, over the, they are under the purview of other state organizations, and we don't get involved in staffing issues per se, but we do, again, have a lot of coordination with Big Bend COC and others on these issues.
Okay. Thank you. That was the way to address that question that I couldn't quite articulate at that moment. So you do, both of you and your neighbors and others have brought up really good issues. And I want to say that at the top of this item, since you probably did read it, this strategic initiative was brought forward at our January retreat because I was reading your emails and others. So you're actually responsible for this item right here because of the concerns and the really good perspective that you brought forward when CityWalk opened last Chris, or around the winter last year, and really started causing a lot of problems leading up to our January retreat. So thank you for that, and this, I just, we don't often get to say that, that those issues directly related to policy within one year. On the other hand, and I think this is significant and gets to some of the comments that have been made, and yours particularly, Mr. Chair, this strategic initiative said coordinate with the city. This is a county policy. We deal with our land development codes. And to my knowledge, the city has not taken up this issue because they're still working through the legal issues with CityWalk. Is that correct, Mr. County Administrator, best of your knowledge?
Mr. Chairman? Commissioners, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So one of the things that I would look to, because the city is within the county and we care about both what's within the city limits and the county, that once they work through those legal issues, because CityWalk is unique, we really need to make sure that we have alignment in these rules, not just on the land development rules, but also on some of the other issues that have been brought up. And I think building on our workshop last summer, I'm glad to know we're going to have information come back in December. We've taken more steps this year than we've done in a long time, but I am still very concerned that we're not seeing that collaboration with the city as robust as we may need in the future for some other issues that we got to, you know, timing issues and things like that. So I think we still need to keep pushing this forward. I like the item as is, and those other concerns that you brought up, I think we need to talk about in December and going forward. So thank you both, thank you neighbors, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Commissioner Minor?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. You totally caught me off guard when you called on me the other time, but I also feel comfortable with the agenda item as it is. I think that this is a proactive way for us to accommodate future centers that might want to establish themselves outside the city limits in the unincorporated area. And I think this is a great step in getting us there. One thing, the reason, one reason why I was kind of off, kind of taken off guard a little bit, because I'm actually been talking a lot with county administrator and county staff about some of the folks that are struggling with homelessness throughout the county. Even along North Monroe, I went to go visit some of the folks that are staying there, right alongside Walmarts and across the street between Baymont and Sweets and Waffle House. I mean, there are folks that have been there for a while. And I've worked with county administrator to ask our street outreach team to reach out to those folks and offer them services. And one thing that the county administrator has made clear, which we will find in our agenda item coming up in December, is that, you know, we need to demonstrate that we've got sufficient services to accommodate people that are here that are struggling. And then number two, they have to agree to partake, to take advantage of those services. And there's, one thing that this upcoming agenda item will explore is exactly what can we do as a policymaking body to take a look at, you know, providing the services, the capacity that we need, which this agenda item will help us with, but then also making sure that we have whatever policy adjustments we have locally that can help us actually help convince and persuade folks to take advantage of the services. There are some folks that are out there that are, that are not in stable housing, that choose to be out there, and they don't, they don't want to change the situation. And so what can we do to help provide those types of services to folks that is compelling enough for them to take advantage of that, so that we can help them enter transitional housing and then eventually into stable housing? So I know that's coming up. That's one thing that the county administrator and I have been talking about at length over the last couple of months at least, but even before that. But that is a, it's going to be a conjunction with this agenda item here about what policy changes we can make to help improve the uptake of people that are truly struggling with nothing and be able to take advantage of the services we have to offer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I want to note the pretty large number of staff persons who worked on the item. It was totally engaged by a number of senior staff. So you know, it's, you go to the operating room and see all those multiple doctors from different disciplines, you think that the case is pretty serious. And seeing the staff that we have compiled on this one issue, I would like to believe that they've given an exhaustive look, and I feel comfortable from the perspective of the diversity of expertise that's registered in the document to us. Having no other comments from any other Commissioners, the motion has been made by Commissioner Maddox. All persons in favor of the motion, please say aye. Persons opposing, same sign. It passes unanimously. Mr. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you requested at your retreat and approved as a strategic initiative, the item before you, item 23, is an analysis of Feeding Florida's recent study to determine the number of Leon County residents missing meals, and recommends partnering with the city and Second Harvest of the Big Bend to conduct meetings in specific neighborhood blocks to identify and address barriers that exacerbate food insecurity in those neighborhoods. Commissioners, over the past several months, staff has been working with Second Harvest and Feeding Florida in evaluating recent studies that quantify hunger at the neighborhood block group level. I know you've heard Commissioner Minor talk about this. But based on this review, Second Harvest and the county intend to utilize data developed by Feeding America to identify and prioritize resources in neighborhoods with the highest levels of food insecurity. The neighborhoods identified in Feeding America's report are presented in detail in this item and include many of the neighborhoods that were discussed in the previous item on 32304, Frenchtown, Griffin Heights, and others. The food insecurity rate in these neighborhoods is significantly higher than the county's overall food insecurity rate, and all have median household incomes well below the county average. Additionally, Commissioners, all of the neighborhoods identified in the Feeding America study with the highest food insecurity are entirely or partially within the city limits. Therefore, given the location of these neighborhoods, this item recommends Option 1, that the county coordinate with Second Harvest and the city to conduct community meetings to determine barriers that exacerbate food insecurity in the neighborhood block groups identified in the Feeding America study. And finally, Commissioners, upon Board approval, the neighborhood meetings will be conducted over the next several months, and early next year, a report will be presented to this Board on any barriers identified, as well as any recommendations we have for you to mitigate those conditions. Again, Commissioners, Shinkton Lammy is here and able to provide more detail on this, if that's the Board's desire. If not, we're happy to simply answer any questions you might have. And again, we're recommending Option 1. We have no speakers on the site.
Hey, Commissioners, we have a recommendation for Option 1. We have a motion seconded by Commissioner Minor, and Commissioner Minor wants to speak. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. When I worked at Second Harvest, teachers would tell us, and I'm sure Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Jackson would be able to attest to this as well, teachers would tell us that kids would come in on a Monday morning visibly hungry because they had not eaten over the weekend. And hunger and food insecurity is a very big problem in this county. Leon County typically has been ranked quite high among the other states, the other counties in Florida with regard to food insecurity. Right now, our food insecurity rate is 14%. It's countywide. But as the county administrator mentioned, there are certain areas, pockets of this county where food insecurity is very, very high. There are neighborhoods around the FAMU area, for example, that are 66% food insecurity. Bond's 60%, NIMs 54%, Frenchtown 50%, South City 48. These are areas where half or more of the people who live there are having a hard time finding, having access to nutritious, healthy food. And that's why this agenda item is so important, and here's why it's important now, because for the first time, we have the ability to drill down to a level of granularity to roughly about the size of an apartment complex or a neighborhood. A neighborhood block group is basically a way to drill down to a small geographical area. Finally, we got a point where we have a small enough area to work with. We can go to a neighborhood and not do something to that neighborhood, but work with the people who live there and ask them and work with them to help identify the barriers to food insecurity and then help resolve those barriers. And every neighborhood can be different, right? You might have a community of, a neighborhood of senior citizens. Their needs are different than an apartment complex of young parents with kids. They might, they might have same level of food insecurity, but how to address those needs are different depending on the neighborhood. That's why this is such a great agenda item, because we are partnering with the county, or partnering with the city, partnering with Second Harvest, to reach out to these neighborhoods one by one, identifying what those barriers are, and then working to resolve those barriers. That might be resolving a food desert for a neighborhood. It might be, it might even be changing a Star Metro route to accommodate and provide more transportation to a neighborhood that currently doesn't have any, to a grocery store. So this is a very big deal, and it's been a long time coming. We've had some issues with the, finding the right data that was credible, that we could work with, and we find, after a tremendous amount of work from staff and Second Harvest and the city, we're now at this point, we've got this. So I hope you all will support it. This is really exciting. We will be able to show, over time, our progress on these hard-hit neighborhoods and be able to show that food insecurity is, food security is improving over time because of our efforts here. So I hope you'll approve it. My motion for Option 1, please, and I'll go from there.
Mr. Chair, let the record reflect that I'll second Commissioner Minor's motion for Option Number 1.
Ms. Wood, did you capture that? Okay, very good. All right. Are there other Commissioners to speak on the item? Commissioner Nelson, are you going to speak on this item? Next one? Okay, okay, very good. Any other Commissioners? All right. Hearing none, hearing none. This item, Commissioners, is a tearjerker. It absolutely pulls on the heartstrings of anybody who's competent, awake, and reading and absorbing this information. And the thing that I think about is the dignity issue. And we all have gone to school and been in school with people who had food insecurity or hunger. Shinkton, is there a model from another community, a city that is, that we're trending toward imitating or adopting? How do we, in my mind, I remember people used to, I think the word was, pick on other children if they knew you was on the welfare, or you got food, government assistance. How do we, how is dignity planted in this in a way that in particular, children are not made to feel self-esteem loss and all of that? And those are the concerns and sensitivities which I think makes it a success to buy in when children don't have to feel ashamed because they see the people with the brown truck coming by their house and all of that. So whatever the approach is, I would commend that we give the utmost care in respecting the dignity issue and factor, that it doesn't rob children of their, stuff like that. All right. Hearing no other input. All Commissioners in favor of the motion that's been offered, staff's recommendation of Option 1, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, same sign. It passes unanimously. We thank you. Now, Commissioner Gail Nelson, you're not going to speak tonight? Okay, all right. All right, Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as requested by the CRTPA, the next item on your agenda are proposed modifications to the CRTPA's voting structure, as detailed in the item. Commissioners, the proposed modifications replace the current weighted voting system with a single vote per member system. This would provide for one vote per appointed member, as proposed by Leon County's voting membership, or as proposed, the Leon County's voting membership would be limited to three members, which effectively removes the county's discretion, which is currently in place to have between one and seven members that you appoint to the CRTPA. It reduces the total vote It reduces the total voting share of the county's membership from 37% to 30%. In addition, commissioners, the Leon County School Board would no longer be a voting member of the CRTPA. The proposed single vote per member system was unanimously approved by the CRTPA at its January 21 meeting. The CRTPA anticipates the proposed modifications will be considered by other member governments in the coming months. The city commission is expected to receive a presentation of the proposal during its scheduled meeting tomorrow. With that, commissioners, again, we seek your direction on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have, and we have three speakers on this item.
Okay. Before we hear from speakers, I want to hear from our members on the CRTA. Commissioner Dozier, UNQ, who are other members serving on CRTA? Maddox, Dozier, you on that, Minor?
Yes.
Okay. I like, before we go into public stuff, unless I'm violating something, I want to hear from this, your perspective about what's being offered and suggested this afternoon. Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Maddox, could you share with the board, because you all have personal front-row experience, to tell us what your thoughts are?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if any of our speakers are going to focus on this subject or other subjects related. You are, yes, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. I thought you might. So, I have a sense of what Commissioner Nelson might say, and I talked to former city commissioner Lightsey yesterday about this. So, for those who were heavily involved with creation of CRTPA and really saw the evolution of this, I want to say first that I understand the concern. It's not typical for us to give up weighted voting and therefore some percentage and some power here, particularly when a lot of the funding that comes in to CRTPA naturally, I mean, it comes into Leon, Tallahassee, because we're the largest of our four counties that participate in our MPO. I do understand that. On the other hand, we've been talking about collaboration and partnerships a lot tonight, and I have to say, I can't believe this, but I believe Commissioner Maddox and I, or the vice chair and I have served on this board for 11 years now. To see the evolution there, how much stronger we've gotten as an organization, it is very different than, I think, ever in CRTPA's history, from my perspective. And we have such good collaboration with our surrounding counties who depend on and benefit from investment in Leon, Tallahassee, that the equity issues have really never come up. Now, I will quote Commissioner Lightsey here, just, I'm sure she would appreciate this. She says, "You don't know when the issue comes up until it comes up." That's a fair point. But in this board, we have found that a lot of funding and projects go, I mean, it's to Gaston, Jefferson, and McCullough. We support them. We listen to those folks. And we really thought that the one vote, one member was just the right fit for our MPO, for our four-county region. The last thing I'll say, Mr. Chair, is the reason this came up, and vice chair might be able to fill this out a little bit more, this is why I left it for the end, I believe there was some legislation proposed, this could be going back to 2018, that didn't pass, that would have looked at this issue, and it just sparked a conversation. So, this, this is something that we've thought about and reaffirmed as a board over the last few years. So, again, I mean, it's an unusual situation for us, giving up a little stake here, but from your CRTPA board members and all of our collaborators through the other counties and cities, we're working really well together. So, we thought this one-member, one vote was the right way to go, and we still have more members on the board than Jefferson, Leon, Jefferson, McCullough, or Gaston County. So, I'll hand it back to Commissioner Minor or vice chair for any additional thoughts, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Commissioner Minor, oh, Commissioner Maddox, you're good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier makes some very valid points. You know, since we voted on this in the CRTPA, I've had a chance to think about this, to get feedback from people, constituents. Commissioner Lightsey's email, I thought was very helpful. And I agree with you, Commissioner Dozier, that the current CTPRA is working very well together. And I don't feel like there is a turf competition. But here's where I think you and I differ. It's like that now, but we don't know five years from now, 10 years from now, if that's going to be the same case. And by making this change right now, the county commission forfeits its ability to put additional county commissioners on the CRTPA. And once we forfeit that, I don't think we'll ever get it back. So, that's, that's the issue that I really have with this. And so, my concerns about this are fairly grave, I think. I think the current status quo is working. The current voting structure, the weighted voting structure, is working within our CTPRA. I think it can continue, that teamwork can continue on with the current structure. And here's another thing that concerns me. We have a lot of constituents that are currently involved with the Tallahassee, I'm sorry, the Thomasville Road multi-use path and the feasibility study for that. A lot of neighbors, Commissioner Nelson and others have been working very hard to reach out to the neighbors about that. Now, what happens is, we have this recommended change in voting structure, which is concerning to a lot of folks that I've talked with. Why change this voting structure now, right before this project vote? Now, I don't think the two are linked. I really don't. But, but to neighbors that are living along the Thomasville Road multi-use path feasibility study area, to them, it looks like, well, you're trying to maybe dilute the vote on coming up to this very important project that runs right through my neighborhood. And that's a valid point, too. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm actually not going to support this for the reasons I stated. If I get outvoted, I'm going to ask for a substitute motion to have this effective after Thomasville Road multi-use path project, the fate of that project is determined by CRTPA. So, that way, in other words, the current voting structure will remain in place until after that project has been approved by CRTPA. But I'm not going to support this because I think the CRTPA is working well now. It's a great team, but there's no guarantee that that's going to be the case in the future. It's a good team now because of the personalities that are on it. And I don't want to forfeit the ability for the county commission to put additional county commissioners on the CRTPA if we so choose at some future date. If this passes, we won't have the ability to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have three members on the CRTA. We have a split thought between Commissioner Dozier and Minor with respect to the recommendation in front of us. Commissioner Maddox, you're there, and I'm curious to know what is your thinking. You on point?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair. It feels like we're getting into some discussion. I would love to hear your thoughts on, I mean, you asked, Mr. Chair, what the issue is, how it's
Four of us don't know.
Right, right. And so, it's very helpful. I would like to get into dialogue, you know, about what Commissioner Minor just said, but I'm wondering if we should just keep it to how we got here and then hear from the citizens and then get into our dialogue. I don't, I don't want to keep going with the dialogue too much, but, Mr. Vice Chair, I didn't mean to
No, you're fine.
Interrupt you, I just, yeah. Would like to get to the comments.
Quite frankly, I was, I was a part of that vote, looking at, I think, I think it was unanimous when we took that vote to look at changing the voting structure. But, you know, after reading and hearing and talking to some who were there and have a history of what was going on, and even hearing some Commissioner Minor's points, I, I don't think we're quite ready for the prime time yet. I wouldn't even say voted up or down today. I would lean towards postponing, taking action until after our next CRTPA meeting, going back to have a conversation about some of the reservations that may be had by some of the commissioners here, and then upon having that conversation, taking the vote on, on the Thomasville Road bike path deal, then having a conversation or bringing it before us to take a vote. You know, I think when we initially took that vote, none of us, and you forget history, none of us really had a history. And I think Commissioner Nelson, Commissioner Lightsey bring up some good points about, and Commissioner Minor, too, about the fact that, hey, listen, we work well together now, but let's say that there was, there was a commissioner in a far, far away place, far, far away place, far, far away place that doesn't work well, and throws bombs and lobs bombs, and it becomes an issue. We give up a lot of the power that we have as voting members in that way. But then again, I also see the other side of creating equity for those smaller counties. When we think about the geographic area that's covered and by the CRTPA, and a large amount of it being Leon County, and a large amount of the funds being spent within such, you want to leave room for those smaller counties to feel like they're making a difference when their, when their items come up. But then again, you also want us to have, make sure that we're able to, to stand strong when there's, when there's things that affect the region that we're a large part of. And so, as the speakers come up, I think when it comes, when we come back, I'm just going to lean towards just postponing, postponing this item, then go back to CRTPA, have another discussion about it, and then bringing it back. That would be where I would lean, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Well, we say to those persons who sat so, so, so long to speak to us, and I want to hear from you. But I've checked with county administrator and county attorney. This is, we have three members with three different thoughts, and the four of us who don't know, I'm not prepared to support this tonight. And the four of us who don't know have got no confidence from the three of you all, no shade, just you have different, diverse thoughts about it. We want to be stronger than that. I want to hear from our speakers now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First speaker, Gail Nelson.
Commissioner Nelson, welcome back. State your name for the record.
Gail Nelson, Brockton Way. Congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman Proctor, and to you, Vice Chairman Maddox.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great year coming up, I'm sure. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your very thought-provoking words at the start of this meeting. In the beginning, it was called government by patchwork, because every local government that wanted to do anything extraordinary for its community had to go to the legislature to get a special act passed. Finally, in 1968, the people of Florida voted to change our constitution, and they created something that we now enjoy called home rule. It's worked pretty well, except in recent years, we find the legislature crowding in more and more on the local government priorities. They even introduced a bill in 2018 that pretty much resembles the effect of what your agenda could propose tonight, which would be to overrule the weighted vote on all CRTAs throughout the state of Florida. It failed. Why did it fail? Obviously, it did not serve the majority of the people of the state of Florida. And now, this proposal enables you to do what the legislature could not do to you. I have to ask, what is in it for the citizens of Tallahassee, Leon County? Once you give up 74% of the control of this group, and you then take on 60%, you will never go back to 74%. Today's a good day, you're happy, but the city and the county, in my experience, has not always agreed. You say you have the majority of people on this council, but what happens when the city and the county disagree? Each then must go into a negotiating phase with these smaller counties. And the agenda says there are no financial implications. I've been out of office a long time. A lot of things have changed since I left office. I would say, when you leave, this will stay with us, because never again will you go back. So, to take the position to approve this, the state doesn't have to take away your control. You will surrender us.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. The next speaker, Pat Martin.
Pat Martin, 3119, Brockton Way, same neighborhood as Gail's. Well, you've all stolen my thunder. I was going to explain to you why this is a bad change, but I will give a detail that hasn't quite come out. If, as things stand now, we have three county, three city commissioners from Leon, Tallahassee. And if four of them vote for this, it comes 49%. So, we need only one other person to support you, even though you didn't have unanimity, say, on either the city or the county representatives. This new procedure will require you to have two of the outlying counties. And anyway, we have, in Leon County, we have 75% of the population of this MPO, and the other counties are coming back to about 95,000. We have 393,000. And right now, they have 24% of the vote, except for the one for the school board, which I believe they plan to eliminate. So, at any rate, I just wanted to point that out. A number of us are very concerned as to why Thomasville Road path, I won't bore you with this, is the top of a list of 41 projects in this town. And if you look at the, where they are, you might think, we are not the oldest, the neediest, and have the most people without cars of any area in Tallahassee. So, anyway, thank you for making my points, and thank you, Commissioner Nelson.
Thank you.
Final speaker on this issue is a, joining us by Zoom, Jan Bennett.
Respect, please state your name and address for our records.
We're just making the connection.
Oh, I see, okay. That's virtual.
Can you all hear me now?
Ms. Bennett, we can hear you.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commissioner Proctor, Chairman Proctor, and commissioners. I'm delighted to have heard all of your conversations this afternoon, and I live also in Rose Hollow at 3135 Hattam Court, and I'm a neighbor of the esteemed former commissioner Nelson and Ms. Martin. I have, I'm not going to repeat the things that other people have said. I will say that I really believe the school board should remain a voting member, because there are very few decisions that are made about transportation that are not going to impact transportation, traffic patterns around some school. And again, if the school board does represent Tallahassee, Leon County, that's actually giving up another share of our weight on these issues. I was very happy to hear from Mr. Slay and Mr. Costreva earlier that there's, this was not intended to take effect until after the vote on the Thomasville Road project in January. The only thing I would like to have in the record is that if some reason, for some reason yet unknown, the vote on the Thomasville Road project were deferred to February, or March, or next fall, that this project vote will not be impacted by any change to the voting structure. And that is my only other request. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Okay. Commissioner Dozier?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that was our last speaker? Yeah. I didn't mean to jump in there, but I thought you were getting back to the queue.
Jump in there sometime.
Okay. So, our other counties have already approved this, so this has been in motion for a few years. I completely understand, three of us serve on this board, the others don't. I mean, we have this issue with a lot of different I mean, we have this issue with a lot of different boards, where we have one appoint the others. So I guess I would like to make a motion, hearing the other comments, to punt this to our December 14th meeting and encourage everyone to talk with Mr. Slay, talk with the citizens, have some more dialogue about this. And we will have a CRTPA meeting next week, or the weekend, yeah, next week. Thank you. So we could discuss this at the CRTPA meeting as well, I'm looking at Mr. Slay, and reflect on these issues, just do another gut check. So I think the December 14th might be a good timing, we could always extend that if needed. So that would be the first, I mean, that would be the motion, just make no other change to this, but bring it back on December 14th, reflect on it then, and then move forward after that. Or we can delay it again if needed.
Okay, the motions were made by Chris and Dozier, our commissioner, is there a second to delay and bring this back on December 14th meeting? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
Commissioner Cummings, is there a second? Commissioner Dozier, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since we're digging into this, and we don't often have an item like this that looks at board membership and everything, so I've got to say, this board is not a favorite of a lot of people. We get really wonky into transportation issues and I really, frankly, I think over the years, we've seen a lot more engagement from all members of the board and as the organization has improved. So I think we have a really good board right now. However, I want to note that, from my perspective, we're conflating two issues here. One is the voting percentage. And as Pat Martin just mentioned, we're going, I mean, it's going from 74% for Leon, Tallahassee to 60%. The separate issue, Commissioner Minor, you brought up, is the county giving up the ability to have more than three members. When we had more than three members, and Mr. County Administrator, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think over the years, closer to 2010, 2011, we had all seven members of the county commission, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, y'all both nodding, we had all seven members of the county commission serving on the board, we still get the same 37%. So that diluted our vote. If any one member missed a meeting, we were kind of in effect doing exactly, you know, reducing the county's power there. So actually sticking with three members, or four, but three members kind of worked in this scenario, it does increase our vote and limit that, you know, each of us having less than a percent or something like that. I'm not going to do the math right now, but I think you all hear where I'm going, that the number of members, just having it open ended, has not worked for us in the past, from my perspective. And I wouldn't mind hearing other thoughts, but I think that's something that everybody could dig into in the next month if we delayed it. So one side is the percentage, the weighted voting, the other side is the membership. I am a little concerned about conflating this with the Thomasville Road multi-use path exclusively. I know that's a huge concern, I heard Ms. Bennett's concerns and others, and we're going to be digging into that. This is really, relates to all of the different projects that come to the CRTPA. So delaying it for just one issue, that kind of concerns me. I know, I mean, you may not have been saying that, Commissioner Minor, but if that's the concern, I think it either works or it doesn't. And that's why, and again, thanking Commissioner Cummings for seconding that motion, that's why I thought we could bring it back in December. If we still have issues at that point, or if we don't like it, we can choose not to approve it, or we can punt it until the new year. But I do think that we have enough time in the next few weeks to have a conversation at CRTPA and dig into some of these issues, talk with staff, whatever that might be, and take it up again. And last comment, Mr. Chair, is because our other three counties have approved this, this has been voted on and discussed by CRTPA back in 18 and 19, and then again this year. So I don't mind slowing it down, and there are valid concerns, but we need to respect where we were with the other counties as well, and kind of give them a decision sooner rather than later. That would be my perspective, Mr. Chair.
What point of information, us four members still don't have a recommendation from y'all, it's just merked up. A vote taken in January arriving to us in November, what gives rise to a foot dragging? I mean, is this the speed of bureaucracy, or what causes hesitation for it to come back to us? And then secondly, what do y'all want us to do?
Commissioner Proctor, I'll take a whack at that. I think that if you were there and had the conversations, and were part of the conversations, you would, let me go back and give the history. What happened was, and I confirmed it with Commissioner Slay, with Mr. Slay is that, then at the time, Representative Bashir's had brought forth a proposal to make every MPO have equal voting and no weighted voting. At the time, we were discussing it as a board, we all talked about it, the lean county, the small counties weighed in, and they thought it was a good idea. And so we said, okay, let's do that.
So y'all got soft hearted?
Oh, no, wasn't necessarily soft hearted. At the moment, I'll tell you what my thought was. Even if it's unweighted, we're looking at three commissioners from Leon County, three from City of Tallahassee, you had, or two from City of Tallahassee, two, three from City of Tallahassee, you have one from each small county. And so we were still, even in an unweighted vote, we still carried weight more than those smaller counties. And so, and so my thought at the time, again, this was at the time, was, okay, well, we still carry some weight, so I can still see that, okay, we can look at it. Now, that was years ago. We come here today and I get some historical data on why it was the way it was, and also some shortfalls as to moving in a different direction. I don't think, I know for a fact, matter of fact, it's not, I know for a fact that that conversation did not happen when we had the conversation at the CRTPA. Giving us the opportunity to go back to CRTPA, have a meeting with us three, the city as well, have that conversation with the opposition there, hearing out both sides of it, and then reevaluating, okay, do we want to stay where we are, or do we want to look at this vote again, I think is a fair thing to do. Now, Commissioner Dozier, you have a point about the Thomasville Road deal. What I don't want is, I don't want us to come back here in December and then punt again. So that's why I didn't second the motion to say December the 14th. I would much rather say indefinitely, but given, I'm sorry, Director Slay and the county administrator, the ability to bring it back on the 14th, if there's a clear indication of where we're going on the 14th. That way, it's not even on the books yet, but it can be if, if we get clear direction or there's no more conversation to be had. So I would rather us do it that way, so that's why I didn't go with just seconding the 14th. But I do think we need to postpone at this point. I think the CRTPA as a whole needs to have a conversation, city, county, and small counties, because quite frankly, I would like to hear what the small counties would say to the argument that was presented by those in opposition today. So, Mr. Chair, that's the lay of the land now? I think it would do us, the members of the CRTPA, good to have that conversation with hearing opposition as well, and then bring it back to you, and then we can stand strong on whatever recommendation was made. But today, those who sent in opposition weren't there three, four years ago. So it just gives us a moment, take a step back, really consider the fact that we're giving up this weight. And quite frankly, let's be honest, if we give it up now, we're not getting it back.
All right. Commissioner Dozier, is there consensus, you and Commissioner Maddox are senior members here, and I'm curious to know, are you all on consensus of moving off December 14th and maybe waiting indefinitely? And what would that motion be called, Madam?
An amendment.
I know, I need the two of you all, y'all senior commissioners, I need, don't leave us hanging.
I get it. Commissioner Dozier, what I'm asking for is a friendly amendment to take the 14th off, that the administrator be able to bring it back if we have a definitive answer for our question and the discussion that we have at the next CRTPA meeting. If not, then it's postponed and pushed to another meeting. So just wait until we get a definitive answer is what I'm asking for with the change of the 14th. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I know others are waiting to weigh in on this, so I'll save a couple of comments for after the other, my colleagues make comments. On this one, though, I would be willing to amend the motion until our January meeting, but I don't want it to be indefinite. So if we need a little more time, we can push it to January. I don't think this needs to be studied to death, I think we can figure this out in a couple of months. So that's as far as I can go. Thank you.
Okay. All right, commissioners, we have Commissioner Welch, Maddox, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Dozier, you up?
Chair, point of order.
Okay.
I believe Commissioner Dozier just amended her motion, but the second of the motion needs to agree to the amendment. That was by Commissioner Cummings.
Extended to January.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. We have a live motion, Commissioner Jackson.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I was in the queue, you called him in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just the way I, Commissioner, I'm just going by this electronic.
Can I go ahead?
Of course, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just give my non-CRTPA, one of the four outcasts opinion. You know, my instinct is not to give up our weighted voting, but my inclination is to support your recommendations as people who sit on the CRTPA. I think the best way to not conflate the voting arrangement with the controversial aspects of the Thomasville Road multi-use path is to simply do what Commissioner Maddox said earlier, which is to wait until that is put to bed and then revisit this issue. Now, when is the vote scheduled for the multi-use path?
I believe February.
February, so this would have to wait until January. So it'd have to wait till February to get a definitive, to put that behind you and then talk about this. That would be my suggestion and recommendation. I can, I'll go along with whatever, if you guys want to wait till the January meeting to revisit it and talk to people about it. You know, I think that we're going to hear what we've been hearing about.
All right. I think at that time, Commissioner Welch, we need to know why Leon County needs to give up its power. And you all have not been persuasive to tell us what's in it for us, what is advantage for them. I don't understand the fundamental stuff, and y'all have not been clear. We need to be clearer than that for, you know, they sent out 12 spies and 10 said, we can't, we grasshoppers, two said we can take it. I'm not getting clarity on what the three of y'all said, can we take it? Is this a good thing or not?
Mr. Chair.
So that right there is a fundamental, fundamental that needs to be addressed for this chair. And I think in fairness to the rest of us, have a clear conscience with our sister counties and all of that. Commissioner Dozier, let's bring this in, Commissioner Dozier, Minor, Maddox, for the final sweep of three members, and we're going to do something on this motion. Okay. Take a short.
I'm pretty amused here that you're looking for us for a unanimous recommendation when we got the agenda item, and we don't always have unanimous votes up here, so we can have differences of opinion. Okay, with that, leaving aside, Mr. Chair, addressing some of the last two things that were on my list, so Commissioner Welch, your comment about waiting for Thomasville Road, I was just sharing a concern that a procedure versus a single project, I'm having a little concern about that. But if Leon County Commission was to approve this, CRTPA would have to amend the bylaws, that couldn't happen until the February meeting. So the Thomasville Road vote in February is going to happen, and thank you, Executive Director Slay, for just texting me, we could move that bylaws vote at any point later in the calendar. So that's not a problem. So we can take this up in January as a Leon County Commission, February CRTPA, it will not be in effect at that meeting. We would amend the bylaws and it would come into effect at a later date, or we could move the bylaws off. So that's one issue. So the timing, it seems like it's in line with what you all are saying as regards Thomasville Road. The second piece is, I just had forgotten this earlier, encourage everyone to talk with the school board, or talk with Mr. Slay about that, because transportation is a critical issue for the schools, absolutely. But in the last 11 years, we have not had an active, consistent school board member, and it really is out of their purview. This is a county and city transportation issue. We need to look at school issues for sure, but there hasn't been the, really, the, a big role for our school board members in that discussion. If they want to be there, if they want to show up and really get engaged, that's great, but it is a little bit out of their purview, and they have delegated to city and county Leon and Tallahassee over the years. So that was my last thought, Mr. Chair, but the motion for bringing it back in January, it seems like it aligns with everyone's concerns, and CRTPA would not be making a decision until after we take up Thomasville Road. Thank you.
All right. Closing argument, Commissioner Minor, then closing argument, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very quick. I support the amended motion, I think it's the right choice to make. And Commissioner Dozier, I hear what you're saying regarding, you know, a singular project changing the process or editing the process, right? I understand that. But my opinion is that we've got hundreds of people, thousands of people, along Thomasville Road that have been working very hard on this and advocating for or against, you know, different options. And so from their standpoint, to have this all come out of nowhere, it creates some suspicion. And so I think it's not, it's not an urgent thing for us to change this voting structure if we decide to change it. I think we need to work hard to make sure that we instill trust among the people that we work for. And so I support the motion because I do think if this structure, new structure gets adopted, it will not interfere with the Thomasville Road multi-use path vote. Should the Thomasville Road multi-use path vote get delayed in any way, I think we all should strive to make sure that the existing structure for voting remains in place. For the sole reason of making sure that we are instilling trust among the people we work for. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, be quick. So you asked the question of, there's no clarity between the three of us. Quite frankly, my lack of clarity here, because I came here fully expecting to support the idea of us moving to one member per vote, okay? But when I heard the opposition, read the emails, I don't want to go back on that decision, which I was persuaded to a little there, at least think about, without hearing from the small counties. They made an impassioned argument years ago of why we should move in that direction. And I believe that they should be able to speak to the opposition that's been given here today before we make a decision to move, or at least before I make my decision to move in that direction. So let's take a step back, let's take it back to CRTPA, let those in opposition speak. I think 75% of the population is very persuasive. I think that also the idea of the square mileage covered by Leon County and City of Tallahassee, again, very persuasive. But I don't, I'm not, I'm not going to go back on a decision that I made with a clear conscience years ago without hearing from those small counties, who should have a say and be able to defend what we're saying here today. And so, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, that's why you don't hear the clarity, I believe, from the three members that you have, because years after we made that decision, there's some opposition that needs to be heard at the CRTPA level and discussion had at the CRTPA level before I know me myself can stand here and stand solid on what I recommend us move in, the direction we move in. So I will support the motion on the floor, look forward to having the conversation. Commissioner Dozier, I think you bring up some good points in that. Moving to January does not make this happen right when we take the vote in January, it's just the next step. We'll still be able to vote on Thomasville Road prior to it finalizing if we move in that direction. But it's just, it's just making the decision while having, in this case, the least of those, which are those who don't have the majority of the vote, have an opinion before we make this decision as the big vote in the room. So that's where I am, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. We have an expert witness here, any commissioner would desire to ask the executive director of CRTPA any questions? Would the executive director care to offer any comment of clarification? Closing word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe, I just wanted to clear a clover of the confusion, though I think Commissioner Dozier addressed that, just if in the event that you were to pass it tonight, which I will see or not, those voting changes would not go into effect until after the bylaws have been amended. And in terms of, and we had this discussion previously about if, the proposal right now is three members for the City of Tallahassee and three members for the Leon County Commission, if you all wanted to have more members, you could have more members. if you all wanted to have more members, you could have more members, you would just be set to that same voting proportion as you are now with the 37 points. So it doesn't preclude more members of the county commission being on there. Three was just the initial proposal for both the city of Tallahassee as well as Leon County.
Okay. Members, do you have any questions of our Executive Director? Here and now, we appreciate you. Thank you for your leadership. And Commissioners, we should be ready now to offer our vote. The motion again was by Commissioner Dozier, and that is that we would take our foot off the gas, hit the brakes, bring this matter back on January, our next meeting in January. And was there any other amendments to that? Was that pretty much it? Okay, that's it. Okay, all right. Having reset this motion, all members in favor of this motion has been offered, please say aye. Any opposes of this, it passes unanimously. We thank you very much. I didn't think it was going to take 50 minutes to deal with. All right. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Commissioners, this item seeks your consideration of a proposed county commission redistricting map. As you're aware, counties are required to go through the redistricting process every 10 years following the dicennial census. Redistricting is primarily done to ensure commission districts have as nearly equal a population as possible. As outlined in the item, the proposed changes are minimal and concentrated in one small portion of the county. Less than, there are no changes in districts three, four, or five, and less than 600 residents would be moved from district one to district two. Commissioners, per the 1983 District Court Order, Leon County is required, as you know, to maintain a majority minority district and a majority access district. The proposed redistricting map accomplishes this while meeting all other legal requirements with the Board's approval. Commissioners, we will commence a public outreach campaign to solicit feedback in advance of the public hearing on December 14th. Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have. We're recommending options one and two.
Commissioner Maddox.
Move to the recommendation second.
Okay. Motion has been made by our at-large commission, has been seconded by Commissioner Welch. Before we pass on this, I think this is significant in that this is redistricting for five of us, and I just want to poll and make sure, as district commissioners, the seats that you're in, as well as subsequent commissioners, to represent those seats. If you are extraordinarily okay and pleased, number of states are having, including our own, a whole lot of valet with respect to districting, state jurisdictions, federal redistricting, lawsuits everywhere, and I think it's very significant that each individual commissioner, we need to see the whites of your eyes, hear the sounds of your voices. This methodology that we have is born out of the struggle of a federal lawsuit with a consent decree, and we're following in the spirit of the Voting Rights Act, but it means a lot. I think that in particular, our district commissioners are weighing in tonight that each of us are, our thoughts about it. Commissioner Minor, I want to just start with district three, five, four, and two, and then one, and if at-large desires to speak. And it's so interesting, it's so interesting, that when you read this, we have a districting system born out of a history where African Americans could never get on the county commission because all five seats were at-large, and it just never happened until the creation of a districting system to be in compliance with the 65 Voting Rights Act. And tonight, those at-large commissioners on our community are certainly light years away from where we were when we started, and you can't, couldn't help but pause in reading the matter to see the evolution of our community. Commissioner Minor, would you weigh in? Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Jackson, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to compliment the staff on its work. I know it's a long time coming here, but appreciate it. And, Mr. Chairman, I think the historical merit of what you described in terms of, you know, the district representation is a, is a big part of why you're here today and how this, how this agenda item continues that goal. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item was rather extraordinary to see. First and foremost, I have no problems from a district perspective, so that answers your Looking at, and if anyone's interested in these numbers, I encourage them to look at the 2010, what happened after the 2010 census, the redistricting. It had a pretty big change. I mean, district three particularly gained a lot of territory and had to kind of snake in between district four and five. I mean, it was this balancing of proportional districts, really learned a lot, frankly, in my first year about that. To see the numbers and how consistent they are this year, that is really fascinating. So it led me into one conversation that, Mr. County Administrator, I appreciate having during our briefing yesterday, and I promised that I would bring this up today. I'm sure most of us over the years, or many of us, I will say, have seen presentations on, projections on population growth. We saw this during the Wilani, we saw the, I mean, I can remember Wayne Tetter, when he was at Planning Department, giving these presentations year after year. We had certain assumptions about where population would go and how fast it would grow. And my gut feeling on these numbers is that this is different than what we assumed would happen in the last 10 years. So what I'd like to suggest is, and we don't have a motion yet, Mr. Chair, right? Or we already do have a motion? Okay. Well, this could be friendly amendment or a separate motion. What I'd like to suggest, and, Mr. County Administrator, if you want to chime in on this at any point, because I think you thought this might be an interesting tack, is to look at that data, to compare it to our population projections, and also the projections of what land use was going to be needed for housing and compare it to what actually happened. This may show that we've got a lot more urban infill than we thought. It may, it may help inform some of our land use decisions or support for different neighborhoods, whatever that might be. So for the making of the motion, that, just asking the county administrator at some point, and, Mr. County Administrator, you did mention the retreat or at some other time. I would leave it to your discretion on when to bring it back, but just helping us dig into those numbers and reflect on the differences, see if it informs us going forward.
You go with it.
Thank you, sir. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Commissioner Welch?
I'm going with it.
Okay. Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, on a much lighter note, I just need to be reassured that those voters coming from Commissioner Proctor's district will receive the proper information about the new district that they're joining to the west. Is that, is that right?
Those are all independent voters.
I will support it.
Okay. Very, very good. At-large, you all care to comment? Very good.
Commissioner?
I'm pleased with my district. That's why I want y'all to say nothing.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just very briefly, this was a very interesting report, well put together. I want to thank staff for the documentation and for the statistics that were provided. It's very sensitive to me, Mr. Chair, because having moved to Tallahassee in the early 80s, I was involved with NAACP and involved with this lawsuit as well. And of course, we are clearly concerned about maintaining the mandate that that settlement agreement provided. Reading the statistics and the numbers that were provided by staff, you know, I'm delighted that it only affects 566 residents, and also delighted that those that are moved from district one to district two, it still maintains the majority minority district for district one. I think in keeping with the mandate of that settlement agreement, I think it would be approved by NAACP as well as the District Court, which is one of the requirements, or several of the requirements of that consent decree and the settlement agreement. So having said that, Mr. Chair, I support it. I think we will still maintain the integrity of the issues that were reached when that lawsuit was finally resolved.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good. I concur with all that has been said. There is no doubt, Commissioner Jackson, that those are very good people that you received, and they have the bestest of high manners and good behavior, and you treat my people well. That's what I want to say. If I get a report back on you, you'll hear from me. Commissioner Cummings, I want to assure you that in the brief period that I've been here, I have, there's never been contention with staff, or I've always been a, if you will, watchdog of this process, because I've been keenly aware of the struggles of the 83 lawsuits and so forth, and the 1983 lawsuit. I mean, 42 USC 1983, you know what I'm saying? Not the year 1983. All right. You know what I'm talking about. Our staff has always been abiding in my recognition, supportive in implementing, and we've never had to check, call on the carpet, or in any way contest proposed lines. And I want to compliment staff for the spirit in which we have adhered to the consent decree. And there's never been any further rift with regard to how we have enacted and abided by principles that were called for. So Vince and County Attorney, thank you all for your adherence to the court's, the court's order. Commissioner Dozier, this is not a rebuttal at all to your comments about these numbers, but as we think about these numbers, this might be, Commissioner Jackson and I have relatively strong populations, we have equity in the population, but School Board Vice Chairman, the thing about these numbers is that district four, 60,000 people, is a total different 60,000 from district two and district one. The social, the economic, the educational is different. So I'm not sure what the dig from your perspective. Commissioner Dozier, maybe you want us to know about household income, what the disparities of districts might be in terms of, but while numeric numbers are very even, the numeric numbers are even, but the life stories such as 32304 is quite not, not even. So those are concerns that we as a commission try to undergird to bring our community up to a reasonable, compatible, sharing of space, resources, and all of those things. And that's what makes this job difficult, that not all of these districts have the same type, and we're working to even playing fields and all of that stuff, and so it is in all communities. Yes, ma'am.
You're doing a great job asking us for responses tonight, so I was just preparing for you to ask me for a response, but--
No, 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 no. No, 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 I was not.
You and I are on exactly the same page.
Okay.
And I will just sum it up with this. The population projections and where we projected the growth to happen in Leon County drove decisions like with Wilani, which put a lot of infrastructure in emphasis, and I'm not rehashing that one, in that area. Maybe these numbers show us that our emphasis should really be in other, in all areas of the county, or in the urban area, or something like that. We're getting to the same thing. We made a lot of assumptions based on numbers that I don't think are projections, that I don't think actually happened. So I'm just looking for that to inform us so that we can get to the very points you are making and make the right policy to decisions for where our population is going and what the needs are in all parts of the county.
That's excellent. And there's no doubt that when you get population centers like Wilani, you can project, those are people who can go to the bank, they can get approved, it's on automatic pilot, and those are the things that don't just happen automatically in all geographic regions of our community. So sometimes the data, I'm not saying it's false data, it's just that some are more capable of fulfilling what's projected than others. It's just, there's a difference. All right. What was the motion that we received? No, seven? All right. Okay, with the amendment by Commissioner Dozier, the motion by the Vice Chairman is options one and two. We had a good second from Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor of options one and two, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, the same sign. This two passes unanimously. And I just want to say tonight, Vince, as we've come to, I'm not saying that Commissioner Minor lacked, had some deficits, but I want you to know that Commissioner Proctor has had a total unanimous vote on every single item tonight. Did y'all note that?
We're being soft on you for a first meeting.
This is how you do it, Mr. Jackson. Dr. Jackson, you have to bring a unanimous. I'm having fun, guys. It was, I was wondering if we were going to have unanimous, you know? And, but we've had 25 items that have come through, I'm sorry, 30 items, 20, 30 items.
You know what you just did on this last item, right?
Sorry?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, item number 26 seeks the Board approval to award three-year FY '22 through '24 Tourism Legacy Event Grant Funding Agreements to our legacy events. The Board approved the creation of our legacy program to facilitate regional and national growth of some of our longstanding community events that have been shown to generate 2,000 room nights and an economic impact of over $1 million annually. The funding agreement for each of the legacy event, or, uh, legacy event organizations are based upon a three-year funding plan and will be implemented with mutually agreed-upon goals for each year. Of course, it's subject to your annual budgetary approval, Commissioners. There are adequate funds available in the Division of Tourism Legacy Grant Program Budget. Future, again, I just mentioned that future funding is subject to annual appropriation by the Board. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Commissioners, we're recommending option one.
All right.
And I have just one speaker, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, on this item. Sean Marston.
Sean, please state your name and address.
Good evening. Sean Marston. I live at 5979 Ansel Farrell Road. I'm with Springtime Tallahassee. I'm the treasurer of Springtime Tallahassee this year. With me tonight, I have the President, Trey Faulkner, and our Executive Director, Blake Moore. We are asking for your support to approve this legacy grant. This is a major source of income to help us throw on the Springtime Festival. We'll use this grant to expand our marketing efforts out to, to reach a larger radius of people. We also look to possibly bring a second night of music. We instituted the Music Fest several years ago, and it's highly successful. So with this grant, we look to expand that. So we're looking to bounce back, you know? Over the pandemic, we've taken our hits, we've taken our lumps, we've lost some memberships, you know, and our activities were limited, but we did make some positive change. We changed our structure. You'll notice now we have a Governor and First Lady as one of our major figureheads for Springtime and all of our out-of-town events. Last weekend, we went to Apalachicola Seafood Festival. They had a parade, which was awesome. It was our first parade back in a couple of years, and everybody was excited. We look forward to the Veterans Day Parade coming up this week, Winterfest. I just want to let you know that we're having a golf tournament on Friday to raise money for scholarships. And, you know, as we gear up towards January and get ready for springtime and our festival, we look for your continued support, and we'd also like to invite anybody out there who'd like to join us and help throw on this festival. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are the speakers. There are the speakers.
Includes our speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioners, may I inform you that Commissioner Dozier has alerted staff that she seeks recusal on this particular vote, so I would also ask if she would not participate in the discussion as such?
Mr. Chair, but County Attorney, I think I need to mention the recusal. The reason for it, yes. If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
My sister works for Lemoine. I do a family that volunteers, as you all know, but now that I have a sister working for Lemoine, I'm going to recuse myself from this item on a perception of conflict of interest. On the advice of our County Attorney, I'll just mention this, I don't mind recusing myself from the full vote, but Attorney Essing did say we could break up 1D, which is the Lemoine grant, from the other three. I leave that to discretion of you, Mr. Chair. I could go either way. Thank you.
Right. In a recusal situation, it could be arbitrary, but my thoughts is that if a Commissioner recuses themselves, that they likewise should not have comment, which might influence our thoughts, because he might not have a vote, but the weight of your thoughts could influence those who otherwise. So I would prefer your complete recusal in commenting. Was that what you were asking?
No, sir. There are four organizations that are recommended for grants, so only one of them, I need to recuse myself, which is Lemoine. The other three, I have no conflict.
Oh, I see.
So again, I don't mind skipping the entire vote, but the conflict is only one of the four grants. So the County Attorney had suggested that we could break the vote into two, but that is your discretion, Mr. Chair.
Very, very good. That's no shout.
I agree with you on the comments.
That's not a problem. I want to tell y'all, Commissioners, we're in the bottom of the ninth, and I'm pitching a no-hitter. So...
This chair, in the effort, in the effort to abide by what state law is to give Commissioner Dozier to the ability to vote on the things that she can, I will make the motion for all items except for Lemoine. I will separate that one out. So that will be...
Second.
Springtime Tallahassee, Red Hills Horse Trials, and Market Days. I'll make that with the comment as well that if you look at the geographical equity of it, you got one south side, Market Days happening at the fairground, Red Hills Horse Trial happening in the north side, and then two downtown. You can't get any more even than that when it comes to spreading the money around and the events around geographical areas. It's starting to make me think about the rest of the money, the rest of the things that we do as far as our tourism dollars go, but I think this is pretty well, this is a pretty good indication of how diverse geographically those dollars are being spent. And so I'll make that motion, and then we'll come back to do Springtime after.
Okay, we've got that motion seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Minor?
Oh, I seconded the motion.
Okay.
Oh, that's right. Mr. Chairman, I was in the queue, but basically Vice Chairman Maddox did the motion just as I was going to make it, so thank you very much, Vice Chairman Maddox.
Good. Now, we're in the bottom, we're in the bottom of the ninth. I got a no-hitter going. I mean, that's just, these unanimous things are going, going, going. We can get there. I wanted to ask the question, and I didn't see Ms. Messler or Ms. Post, but the Frenchtown Rising event, I ponder, does it meet the threshold of what qualifies for a legacy event? And I think they had to generate a minimum economic impact of $1 million annually, and I was pondering, where's the Word of the South event, and is, has it, is it extinct?
These are your events that meet that threshold currently.
Okay. All right. Hearing that, any other discussion? Ms. Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think both you and Vice Chair bring up some good points on this about the diversity. And if you remember, we, and I may need some help with this, Ms. County Administrator, we created kind of a tiered system for these large events to help other events become a legacy event. Did I say that appropriately, Ms. County Administrator?
The emerging events.
The emerging, thank you. That was the obvious choice of the word. It's a long, long day. So I really hope on the other side of the pandemic, we start seeing more events qualify for that emerging category, and they get other support. I think Lemoine was actually within that. I'm not voting on that one, so that's not a comment about Lemoine, but it helped them increase their numbers and qualify. So I think working with those organizations is really good. I would also encourage you all, at such time as we get the COCA grants, I believe they're coming back to us, there is a lot of focus on diversity, and they're really getting a lot more dollars for outside the community. The Art for Bond was a Bloomberg grant that they helped with, and I think we're really on the right path. So Frenchtown Rising, other events like that, may qualify in the future years, and we really need to encourage them to find out more about the process so they know what those numbers look like, because it may be different between the COCA grants and the TDC grants. They still qualify for something, which is the other reason why I'm mentioning COCA here. If they don't qualify for these really big ones that attract a lot of folks from out of town, they could still qualify for funding. Thank you.
Well, we want to be mindful that, we don't want to raise the bar qualifying so high that groups which might and could get a junior tier, but just to say that they have a million-dollar impact is a tremendous height of a bar. So those are good events. I don't know what happened to Word of the South. They're still coming up in whenever their time is, but maybe the bar is too high. Maybe we could look at a different category.
There is another category for them.
There is? Okay. All right. Commissioner Cummings?
Just very briefly, Mr. Chair, I certainly support these events. I think we're all excited about all of the events coming back, especially here, where we've all gone through this coronavirus the last year or two. So especially Springtime Tallahassee, I think we're ready to see the floats and the festivities. Not only that, but it certainly will jumpstart the economy even more. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support. The recommendation from Sayer.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm so confident in our county's administrator, that if you want to represent our board in the Red Hills, on the horse that jumps over the thing, I just believe that our county administrator could do it. And Vince, we support in that event significantly, and if you want to put on some Kentucky Derby-type jockey outfit and get on a little horse, we would support you. We'd be on the front row. You all are having too much fun. Let's get ready to go home. All right, all in favor of the motion of Commissioner Maddox for the three items that he's nominated, please say aye if you support. Oppose is the same sign. It passes unanimously. Ms. Wood, did you get that, Ms. Wood? All right, all right. Yes, sir?
Motion that we approve, the last item, which is Springtime Tallahas, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lemoine, the Lemoine item for a legacy event grant.
We got a second from Commissioner Welch on a good motion from Commissioner Maddox. All persons in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise? That's a shutout. Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. You can tell a great chairman, you always get unanimous support. That's just good chairing right there. Ms. Wood, you got that down there? All right. All right.
Mr. Chair, just in case, that was 6-0 with Commissioner Dozier. He recused.
Recused. Not against, I was recused. Thank you very much. All right, Commissioners, we ready ourselves, and I, do we have any speakers to be heard?
We do not.
Okay. As we prepare and ready ourselves to dismiss, we know that we won't be meeting prior to Thanksgiving. We're grateful for the community that we live in. We know that the Veterans Day is upon us, and, Mr. Administrator, are there any announcements relative to Veterans Day that any of us are supposed to partake of?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Thursday, November 11th. Don't forget. I'm sure your calendars are already marked, American Legion Hall on Lake Ella, breakfast starting at 6:30 a.m. In keeping with tradition, the Chairman will take the early shift from 6:30 to 6:45. And just want to encourage everybody to come out and want to give our Ben Bradwell and his team big kudos with our Operation Thank You Again this year. So that's that on our Veterans Day, and, Mr. Chairman, just while I've got the floor, Chairman asks that I provide just a brief update, and I'll make it very brief. Some of you may have seen our hiring fair yesterday.
Awesome.
And our HR department, as well as Matt and his team, really kicked it out of the park, not unlike many organizations throughout COVID, and I'm talking about over the last two years. We've had significant attrition in our ranks, and I can tell you, in one day, we filled wait for all our vacancies. And so again, we're really excited about that. We think we learned a lot in the process in meeting one-on-one with candidates out there, and it was a big success. And again, I just wanted to thank our HR department, Candace and the team, and Matt Cavell and the team. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you. County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, we had our newest Assistant County Attorney, Christina Smichael, who I tried to walk around and introduce to you a little bit earlier before the meeting started. She officially started yesterday. We're very excited to have her and get her up to speed. In litigation news, in accordance with the memo that I sent out to the Board previously, we did go ahead and file our petition for administrative proceedings to dispute the Notice of Violation and the Fine from the Department of Health. The Department of Health has 15 days to refer our petition to the Division of Administrative Hearings. That will run next week. They have not yet referred our case. Things will start moving then, so we're still in the early days of that litigation, but I'll be providing more updates to you as things move along. But that's all I have for the Board.
Very good. Thank you so much. Commissioners, as we come around, the bend will start with Commissioner Minor, and we'll move on up to the north side of the dais. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate you, Chair Proctor and Vice Chairman Maddox. Looking forward to working with you over the next year. And then during the reorganization ceremony, I was giving my little speech, and I was actually staring at my wife, but I yet, I recognized everyone in the world except her. So I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm very thankful that my wife was here earlier today. I'm going to be stopping by the store to pick up some flowers on the way home.
Why? Why don't you take the flowers right there by you?
That would not work.
Have those.
She may be watching. She's going to know, right? I'm sure she's fine with it, but still, I had to recognize that.
You know, Commissioner, you asked permission to hang your photo above the fireplace, and I said, that's better than being in the fireplace.
It's going to be in the fireplace now, yeah.
It may be in the fireplace.
Just two requests, quick requests for proclamations. One, Arbor Day is coming up in January, so I would like to request from the Board a move to have a proclamation for Arbor Day coming up.
Motion been made for Arbor Day proclamation seconded by Vice Chair. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And then the second one is, I was hoping to actually request an expedited proclamation. Steve Ulfelder, as you know, is a community leader here in this town, who has done a tremendous amount of work to increase public awareness and education of the Holocaust. Tomorrow night, the Holocaust Education Resource Center is having its annual dinner, and we'd like to present a proclamation to him to honor him for his hard work in this. So I'd like to make a motion for a proclamation recognizing him, but also with the additional request of working with Chair Proctor's office to expedite that and have that ready.
Very good.
So all in favor, I'm sorry.
All right.
So used to it, so used to it.
You know, you heard the man. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you all very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Yes, sir. I hope you get in tonight. If you need the Chairman to write a letter for you or something, a little excuse to get it out, I'll write one for you. All right. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to you and the Vice Chair, and I think this is going to be a fun year if tonight's any, we're going to laugh a lot, so thank you for kicking it off well, Mr. Chair. I've got four quick items. I'll start with the two proclamation requests, and I can't help giving her a shout out. Our friend Becky at Florida Association of Counties, who we all know, who runs our incredible education programs in her volunteer capacity. She's asked for a proclamation, requested for the Fort St. Louis chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution. They're dedicating a Never Forget Garden at the VFW Post 3308 Cemetery to be presented at an outside event. So this is something, they've worked real hard to diversify and get more of the history in, so that would be my motion, have a proclamation. Thank you.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it passes unanimously.
Thank you. This was recognized at the beginning of the meeting, but Claudia Blackburn, head of our Leon County Health Department, is retiring as of January 5th, as we heard, and I'm guessing we would have to do this after January, although I'm hesitant to ask her to come back in since she spent so much time for us. But I would like to request a proclamation honoring her incredible work for our community throughout the pandemic and throughout her time at the Department of Health. So my motion would be a proclamation for Claudia Blackburn.
Okay, we have a good motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. It passes unanimously.
Thank you, and I'll leave it to staff's discretion to coordinate with her. Thirdly, you all may have received some emails about the Cultural Resources Review. The Department of State Historical Resources used to do this review. This is pre-development, looking for any type of artifacts or anything like that. The state is no longer going to conduct that review, and we've had a number of citizens approach us about kind of what comes next. I will say and give a shout out, Ms. County Administrator, to your staff and city. You've jumped on this. We've talked about this in detail. The citizens are very happy, and I know an agenda item is due to come to us on the 14th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. So I believe both of these issues are already going to be captured in that agenda item, but in talking with the citizens, I'll just make a quick motion to ensure that we have the plan for the interim. Are we going to work in-house or with a consultant to do the proper review of new developments until we have a formal plan with the city set in place? And the second part, which was really interesting, and again, I do think staff is already working on this, some counties around the state who employ their own person to do this review have additional services they offer their community. And it stuck out to me that we've, the New Hope Cemetery and others, we're really doing a lot of work reclaiming our history, and I wonder if this position, if we lean towards having an in-house position, I will put it that way, what other services or benefits we might gain for the citizens of Leon and Tallahassee. So my motion is just to have other services and what's the interim plan in the agenda item? Again, they probably already have it, but that's what our...
We have a motion, there's a second.
Thank you.
There's a second on that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, likes likewise, it passes unanimously.
The last thing, Mr. Chair.
Last?
Last thing on this list. This is pretty close to home. We have looked at the Washington Square Building for half a building, quarter of a building, whatever, for a long time, and I would like to ask staff make a motion to investigate whether or not the fencing that is blocked off the sidewalk on that side of Calhoun could be either removed or tucked in a little bit closer to the job site to create space for pedestrians. We have a lot of people crossing from the parking garage over to the courthouse, and then they have to cross the street again, and it's unsafe. So, Ms. County Administrator, did I capture that appropriately based on our conversation?
You did, and I confirm since then that those conversations are underway and have been underway, including deadlines on... deadlines on the owners to do some things. And so we'll get a report back to you.
So you don't need a motion for that, sir?
I don't believe so. I can share that with you via email.
That's fantastic. Thank you very much. That is it. I look forward to seeing you all at Operation Thank You Breakfast on Thursday, and have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Actually, we have an eyesore, and I don't know why that property has not been condemned or visited by the Code Enforcement Board. There are a lot of issues that perhaps we can talk about at the retreat on that property behind us. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things. Wanted to tell everyone, just like the Got Vaxxed event, the Lake Kalani cleanup had to get moved from last Saturday to this Saturday. So I would like to extend that invitation. If you're not going to the Got Vaxxed event from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at Lake Kalani, we're gonna be cleaning up the lakes and collecting food for second harvest. I had, Mr. County Administrator, you might want to guide me on this one in terms of, I had had some complaints about garbage cans being left too close to the road on Mikkasuki. And I would like to ask the County Administrator, or I'd like to make a motion to see if we could have some options brought back for how to, maybe if it's just on our canopy roads or just in high-speed limit areas, to perhaps do something to require folks to move their cans away from the road, because we've got people clipping garbage cans on Mikkasuki, which is, you know, a narrow shoulder and it's 45 mile an hour, I think, 35, 45 mile an hour speed zone. So I'd like to ask for a motion to sort of get an agenda item to look at whatever options we have available to us in regards to that.
Is there a second?
You did a great job. You didn't need any help on that. That's exactly what it would require, was just a vote of the board to bring back an agenda item.
Okay. So, second?
Okay, we have a motion, second. Bring back an agenda item consistent with what was laid out by Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you.
And secondly, and I've spoke to the County Administrator about this, as you all know, the Lake Hall Schoolhouse, which is located in my district, is a real historical asset, not just to northeast Leon County, but to the entire county. And Dr. Jerry C. is a champion for that issue. She's here in the audience tonight, and I wanted to note that. Thank you for your patience for sitting around for this. I'd like to ask for a couple of things in regards to, I know we've talked about the Lake Hall Schoolhouse before. There's been some movement on the issue, particularly, Dr. C. is in discussions, well, she's applied for a grant with the federal government, if I understand correctly. And as a function of that, she's also in discussions with DEP's Division of State Parks to allow McClay Gardens to potentially include the Lake Hall Schoolhouse as an exhibit or a part of the park. And so what I'd like to ask for is a motion for a letter of support. I believe the grant deadline is coming up. Is that correct, Dr. C., like December 1st, something like that?
November 31st.
November 31st. Okay, thank you. I'd like for us to offer our support to her efforts to obtain that grant from the federal government. It doesn't commit us to any financial support. It is just a letter of support from the county. I'd like to ask for that. And then secondarily, so I guess we should dispense with that motion first, Mr. County Administrator. Is that something?
All right, we got a motion, second, for a letter of support in Dr. C.'s grant application, federal grant application. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
And just a note on that one, Mr. County Administrator, she needs that as soon as possible before November 31st. Thank you. And then secondarily, I'd like for a broader agenda item to come back again on the Lake Hall Schoolhouse to give us options that we, the situation is fluid, it's dynamic, it's changing. We still have issues with ownership and property lines on that schoolhouse, as it is, it is sitting on top of a property line between two other properties. I'd like for us to revisit whatever options we have as a county government from a policy perspective to try and help out solving some of those property line problems, property line disputes, whatever that may be, whatever those options are. I just would like the County Administrator and staff to revisit the issue and give us a fresh look at it whenever we can, an update, if you will, on what options are available to us so that we can have a robust discussion at that time. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second, made by Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to reiterate, I think that the Lake Hall Schoolhouse is really an incredible thing in our community. It's a great opportunity for us to really do something good, all right? Preserve a very unique structure and include it in the state park, and I think it would be an awesome thing for us to dig in on and really be creative. So I just want to urge you all to do whatever we can on that one. Second, last thing, real quickly, Family Day, the first ever Leon County Family Day, will be on Friday, November 26th, the day after Thanksgiving. I want to commend our staff, Ann Coca and Kathleen, and the tourism folks and Matt's folks for putting together the first Family Day event. It looks awesome. It's gonna be at Railroad Square from 1:00 to 5:00 on the Friday after Thanksgiving. I would love to see all of you out there. I'll be posting about it on my social medias and stuff, and it's just gonna be a really awesome event. I hope we grow it from here, and Palm Beach County has since followed us and created a Family Day. So that's the first ever Family Day in the state of Florida, and thank you all for your support on that issue earlier in the year. November 26th, that Friday is also my birthday, so it's a great birthday present for me. I tell all my students that my birthday usually falls on the week of Thanksgiving, and for the first many years of my life, I thought that just for my birthday, all my family came from all over the place, and we had turkey and a big.
You're not that special, Commissioner.
I thought people all over the country were celebrating my birthday. Turns out, it was just some kind of big holiday. And super last thing, yesterday was my 18th wedding anniversary, so I want to say thank you to my wife, and this is sort of in the context of Family Day. Commissioner Minor, I understand how you feel. My wife is, you know, the, she is the rock upon which all of my success is built. So 18th wedding anniversary yesterday, I love you, Kim Welch. And today is my son Carter's 10th birthday. And although I love you all, I would rather be with Carter Welch on his 10th birthday. But either way, I wanted to give him a shout out. Carter's my youngest kid, and I love him to death, and we're gonna go to Osaka tomorrow night and celebrate his birthday, because, you know, you gotta go to Osaka on your birthday. Not Japan, but the restaurant. All right? So that's all I got for you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the time.
Man, I tell you, that's something. That's wonderful. Congratulations as well on your 18th anniversary. You may have to take the other flowers home, because Minor needs to take some home to get in. You take the others out. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure the last couple of days of attending the Family Times and Tales at the Leon County Library, which is a collaboration between the Sheriff's Department and the library, and of course, county staff. And it was just a great function, because it's designed to bring inmates together with their families through the technology of the Leon County Library. So I want to thank staff for working hard on that particular initiative, and it was just very touching. And thank our former Commission Chair, Minor, for being there, and he brought some very inspiring words about that program. As you know, I'm in favor of anything that supports family, and it's designed to keep families in touch with their incarcerated fathers and mothers and just relatives in general. So, and then tonight, there were several reports that incorporated the services of the library, reading and literacy awareness for our children, I mean, just holistic approach involving the library. So I just want to commend staff for being innovative in that respect. Finally, I just want to congratulate our veterans. November is always a very sobering month for me. My father, who's in heaven, was a veteran. His two brothers were both veterans of World War II. So it's very sobering, but I certainly appreciate all the service that the veterans have provided that keep us as safe and as free as we are in this nation today. And I certainly hope my commissioners will join me. I plan to be there Thursday morning, serving breakfast to our veterans. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Cummings, are you a good cook? You gonna be there? You there to eat, though, not cook? Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, yes, ma'am. All right, Commissioner Jackson, you gonna be there?
Yeah, as long as the grits have cheese in them. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shout out to Schinkton. Spent an enormous amount of time with me last week in a Zoom meeting regarding homeless issues all over Tallahassee, in particular, the West Pensacola Street corridor. Dr. Jackson's also a neighbor in that same area, District 2. And although we didn't solve any problems, we certainly had a robust discussion with our representative from CRC, is that correct? Yep. And have a number of guest recommendations. It is a safety concern above all. You know, at the end of the day, we can argue about the, I don't want a shelter here, and I don't want a shelter there, and I don't want people to come and sleep near my treasured neighborhood. But the amount of pedestrian traffic and the amount of folks that are aimlessly wandering into traffic is very concerning. I travel that corridor every day, and I just wait for the next accident report. Currently, the Carney Center, we were talking the other day, Schinkton, could you tell me what the occupancy was? Like 170, 180?
Yes, it was at 187. However, working with the Health Department, it looks, we're looking to actually increase that by the end of this month.
Which in turn, potentially could increase the endangered, or increase the prospect or the possibility of a dangerous behavior. I hope that when we come back in December, that we have an item that has some teeth in it, and I hope that it's something that, while we are very compassionate for those that are less fortunate than us, that we also realize that it is a public health issue. And thanks again for all your time, Schinkton. I had a lot of questions, and I appreciate it. Like my fellow Commissioner Welch, I want to take a moment of personal privilege, and after a 17-month battle with stage IV breast cancer, my daughter was able to have a PET scan that reported her as cancer-free this past Friday.
Good.
And she is a true warrior, Ashley Jackson Rutherford, she's married now, but she's only 30 years old. I say only 30, then. She's still, she's still my baby girl. I say this because I want to encourage self-examination. It may be uncomfortable to hear that from a county commissioner on the dais, but self-examination and early mammograms and the frequency of mammograms, and if something is detected that you, don't hesitate. Hers was detected very early on, and even though it was at a very dangerous stage, she has been a battler and has gone through chemo and radiation and a double mastectomy and is now facing a series of reconstructive surgeries. But she has a great attitude, and I just wish that I was, I wish that I was as brave and as strong as her. So congratulations to her and a happy day for our family. I want to wish, I don't think we meet again before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving with friends and family. It's not so much what you do, it's not so much what you eat, but it's who you're with. And value them, because time is short, and there's no guarantee of a tomorrow, or next week, or next year. Make sure you let those people that you care about know that you care about them, and don't waste a minute reaching out to someone that's not close by to say, hey, I just wanted to call and touch base with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the board for appointing us Vice Chair. Commissioner Jackson, that is amazing news. I had a friend who passed of cancer, he's like a brother to me, back in 2014. Before he passed, he said, you know, the difference between making it, not making it, is your will to fight. And I will say that your daughter, your 30-year-old daughter, got that will to fight from her father. I watch you do it every single day. I watch you impassionately speak on behalf of your students and the students of Leon County Schools earlier today, and it just, it brought to mind, when you mentioned that she won that fight, the fact that she learned that kind of fight from her father. So congratulations to you, congratulations to her. But you, that's a testament to the job you did teaching her, that no matter how bad things are, no matter what quartet that you're in, that you continue to fight. So I applaud you for that, and I applaud her for fighting. Happy Thanksgiving. As Commissioner Jackson says, it's a time that you spend around your family, be thankful for your family. But most of all, I think you be thankful for the opportunity to spend that day with them, because there's a lot of people who didn't make it through a pandemic to be able to spend it with their families. There's a lot of people out there who lost loved ones as well. So we should all be thankful that we're here and spending that time with our families. I want you guys to know I'm thankful for each and every one of you. Serving with you guys is absolutely amazing. I think we're the best board in the state of Florida, and I've seen them all. You know, nothing against any of them, I just think we do good work here. I think, I forget who said it, but one of us said it, in that we may not always agree, but we know how to disagree and still leave this dais, understanding that we're both fighting, we're all fighting for the same thing. So continue to do what we do. Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, sir.
Good job today. You're gonna keep us all on our toes. For the newbies, if you don't know, Commissioner Proctor, you don't have to ring in, he'll just call your name, and you'll just be sitting there like, I didn't even ask to speak. So prepare yourself with a comment whenever the question comes. This is a way of keeping us on our toes, there's an old professor in them. Want to give a shout out to Florida A&amp;M University, with the best record in the state of Florida football team. Willie Simmons is doing an amazing job over there. My Seminoles are coming back. Give us some time, give us some time. But Commissioner Proctor had to throw that in there because you had an old ugly bison tie on from Howard.
Had to turn his mic off quickly.
Had to put that in there.
Turn his mic off.
Well, finally, again, let's see you guys after Thanksgiving, have Thanksgiving, and thank you for the opportunity to serve as Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Amen. Thank you very much. Commissioners, I want to thank you certainly for your confidence reposed in me to sit here in this spot as your chair. We're gonna do our best to have a great year, fun year, those wonderful things. Excuse me for my A, causing me to be on the telephone to make sure that I say all the right things, so since it's coming through. We want to give a shout out to Bond Elementary School, Principal Jackson, for their achievement during the COVID, the height of the COVID. They excel in their achievement in the district. So to the teacher, staff, parents, and students, we're so excited. And we know the presence of our Vice Chair on the school board is here tonight, and we definitely lend our commendations to their success and efforts. We want also to recognize the AmeriCorp organization, and like to seek a, some kind of commemoration for them, that they came, we have 11 members who will be coming from out of this community, but coming into our community for, I believe, a period of six weeks, and they will be coming to our December 14th meeting to see local government in action. And I would like to make a motion that we grant to them some token of commemoration or proclamation, motion.
I'll make that motion.
Chairman's made a motion, it's been seconded by Vice Chair, I mean, Vice Chair's made the motion, it's been seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. Want also to note the wonderful, oh my God, the wonderful county's job fair at the O'Perri Library. If y'all didn't go down there, man, let me tell you something. It was folks standing from the doe to the street. The parking lot was full, the post office across the street was full, lottie, dottie, everything. The post office across the street was full. Loty, dotty, every doggone body was there. And, you know, the statement that people won't work, ain't looking for work, da-da-da, that's all it is, yadda-dadda. Folks were there. How many jobs we took up yesterday, Vince?
Over 30.
Over 30. And the comment that I offered yesterday to give explanation for the county taking our HR department to the community, and there was a lesson in that. And people came dressed up, looking the best they could, sincere, orderly, long lines. But what we did, we gave people a chance to come offline and to go online, wwwcountyleonpersonnel. And it meant a lot to be able to see the whites of people's eyeballs, that we could see the white of their eyes, and they could see the white of the county's eyes, that you could measure and reason and get a sense of people face to face. And that's something that's been lost. And I just, it just felt good to see human contact being made, and that we cut the bureaucracy, the red tape of getting online and all of that, so impersonal. So, shout out for, I mean, that shows swag, to go down and meet the community, and the community certainly showed up. So, wonderful, wonderful day for Leon County, and we hired 30 new people. It was a knockout. It was a show-out. Florida A&amp;M versus Homecoming was just off the chain. And to the Ratla Family Nation, it was massive, an epic return. The French Town Rising, I saw Mr. Baba here earlier, so much energy pumped into the community from his leadership efforts on French Town Rising. The Homecoming with Free Anthony Hamilton was incredible. So, really exciting, great energy, a whole lot of money that was brought to our community as a result of. Tonight, Dr. Jackson came before us, and he's still here with us, and he offered paperwork to us, and his interest from us is that the county would consider adopting an ethics, comprehensive, holistic ethics policy. Dr. Jackson, for a number of years now, has been a champion, calling for, one of several major voices, calling for ethics to be established. And I think that his ask is not too tall for us to reach. And in my comments tonight, which you gave me a chance to talk about some things, but I did not bother in light of what today represents in the sentencing of a particular citizen of our community. So, I just didn't talk about how proud I am of our county's leadership, your conduct, your behavior, your professionalism, your warmth, your tenderness, the way in which you engage the public. I just didn't want to touch that, given today's, what we experience in our community. But our county administrator keeps us sailing and keeps us lifted high, and there has not been any spots on our collective or individual character with respect to our ethics. And I'm grateful for that, but I'm sorry, Vince, that I cheated you and robbed us. It's just that today was not the day that I wanted to go there. But that's what I would have said, but I omitted on purpose. But I think that is not premature, and as Commissioner Dozier indicated tonight, there's great harmony at the CRPTA right now. But Commissioner Maddox pointed out to us, the harmony today may not be there tomorrow, because new faces, new people, new dynamics occur. That being said, I think we take the long view to go ahead before we're under any cloud, and I don't expect anybody here, and I'm not indicting anybody, I'm saying that we're not, but it is not too much for us to take a look at an ethics policy that would hold accountable public citizens. I know that I don't want to sound better than nobody, certainly when there's a moment of tribulation. But I do believe in doing right. I do believe that public officials have a responsibility to be right. And I might talk a whole lot, but ain't nobody accused me of ever doing nothing wrong, okay? You could say you talk a whole lot, but I ain't did nothing wrong, and you ain't did nothing wrong. We need to have that because we won't be the people that will hold these seats forever. And I think that it's a considerable step in the right direction. Previous administrations have had so many people indicted, brought up for charges, the federal administration, administration after administration. It just make you sick. But I think that we strengthen our hand in who we are to say that we can live by and codify an ethical standard that we already do. Let's just put it in writing. You know, the difference between shacking up with somebody, you're already living together, just ain't put it on a sheet of paper and gave it to Gwen Marshall downstairs, and getting married. Well, let us marry a set and code of ethics that represents for posterity who we were, how we were, what we tried to be. I don't know how long democracy gonna be around, don't nobody know. But as we try to practice democracy, Commissioners, I'm asking you all, let's engage and be willing to possibly workshop, and I'd like to bring this up and kick it a little bit more at the retreat, that we might grow a little bit more comfortable in embracing it. That was something. Secondly, we had Mrs. Melissa Villar, and I received, Ms. Villar, this you sent me, and I asked for, and she's asked, as she wrote it, asked for on the alternatives, the workshop we having in March, and this workshop on alternatives to incarceration for marijuana possession, and one, expungement, and she must have been reading my mind, and two, and end to pre-employment and random drug screening. Those are the two asks that she has made. And I would like, and she cites Congressman Chris, has added language in the appropriations bills of US House, to end pre-employment and random drug screening. I'm not sure how I feel about that, because there are some jobs that people need to go pee in the cup. We need to know that they're straight. Pilots is one of them. Okay, I need to know the pilot can pee in the cup in pass. So, but for some job categories, I don't know so much. But for the expungement, and we look at both those items, but give the commission a chance to, and I'd like to ask this commission, that we would allow staff to put those elements for our consideration. If we wanted to delete them, we put 16 things in there, take them out, they don't get enough votes to pass. But I'd like your permission to add those two elements in our workshop for 2022. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I could support your motion on that with one caveat. I think we have a lot to discuss. There was a lot of different elements in that workshop that you introduced in the last meeting, and I believe those two issues might be above our pay grade. They're state or federal issues. So, would you mind if we have an update, some information about both of those issues in the workshop? But I just don't know if we need a speaker on it. I'm not sure where you're going with that, to spend much time on it, because if there's nothing we can do, we might just be informed as how those things work and what the legislation is moving through. If you'll remember, we, I believe we added expungement to the legislative priorities. We were talking about that, and we've got that in our priorities. So, I guess I need a little bit more, since we've got so many issues for that workshop, would you be willing to just have some information in the agenda so we could talk about it if needed?
Sure. And I think that county attorney, if you can, you know, rattle the cage on whether or not this is specific federal, if it's out of our jurisdiction, or above our pay grade to deal with expungement and/or either to end random drug screening. There's some jobs ought to be screened, period. And there are some which maybe, I don't know. So, that's fine.
Thank, Ms. County Administrator, you were nodding there, too. I mean, the workers' comp issues, the different jobs, those types of things, that's not necessarily something that we're going to change by a county commission vote or something like that, nor could we, would we may want to change that for all jobs, as the chair said.
We'll make sure to include that analysis in the workshop item, if that's the direction of the board.
I get, Mr. Chair, for my part, we've loaded up staff a lot. I shouldn't just say the speakers of the workshop, loaded up staff. I mean, if we can have some reference to that, I think that might be good, but it doesn't need to be a whole section of it, because we've got so many other issues to talk about. That was kind of my feeling, and I can back you on that.
Okay, well, we're not gonna.
I think it gets you where you want to go.
No, 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 we don't want to lose sleep over it tonight, and it's, expungement is major to those who have records, but for those of us who don't, it's not. But it was an ask from a citizen, and as it relates to decriminalizing possession of certain small amount. I mean, is it gonna get on the ballot? Is marijuana gonna make the ballot in '22, recreational? Is that scheduled to?
I believe the Supreme Court recently invalidated a couple of petitions, but that doesn't mean it won't make it on. I think it's still a question.
I'm just anticipating that, if it gets on the ballot, it's my sense it's gonna pass. And I think that our, we're compelling moral need to review and look at marijuana a little bit different, and if we, if society, I mean, it's the difference of flipping from the 18th to the 21st Amendment of outlawing alcohol, and then coming back and prohibiting, just reversing, you know. So, we outlawed alcohol, then we brought alcohol back on the books. There's something to think about in this regard. That's sort of the way my thoughts work, if that makes sense. Commissioner Cummings?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In that workshop is being planned, I believe there's indication that we would have representatives from the state attorney's office, I believe. Okay, so, expungement and sealing is state statute. It's not federal. So, I think it's probably something that could be addressed if, in fact, we could get some type agreement from the state attorney's office that dealt with maybe first-time offenders of less than 20 grams of marijuana, putting them in a diversion program. There are programs already where if you're a first-time offender, say with a misdemeanor, when you complete that diversion program, that charge is automatically expunged. You don't have to go through the expungement process or the sealing process. So, that is state statute, and I don't think it would be too far-fetched to have that addressed at that workshop. I don't think it would be that time-consuming at all. I think that would be just a holistic approach, really, to looking at marijuana possession, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And one of the strong points you just made is in the chain of expungement, the state's attorney would sign off, would be one of those persons to sign off. So, if he's gonna be at that workshop, this certainly could be an element of which could be addressed. All right. That gives you comfort level, Commissioner Dozier?
Yes, sir. And I will save the rest of the discussion. Thank you. It's good we have an expert, a couple attorneys up here on the board.
She works in the courthouse all the time, I mean, upside down.
This would just be something to clarify where my question is, but we can save, I can get the answers to this later at the workshop. I think my understanding, there's a difference between someone in one of those diversion programs and retroactively looking at those who were charged with possession in those states where it's become legal. Those are two different issues, and I thought Ms. Villar was more focused on dealing with the records of those who have been charged with in the past. But let's leave it alone, and we can, I'm good with that information, and we can talk about it at the workshop. We're good, Mr. Chair.
Okay, very, very good. All right, thank you very much. Who's up?
Mr. Chair, I want to, you made some comments in reference to Dr. Jackson's letter to us.
Yes, sir.
What I would like, if you don't mind, is I would like for the county, I'm sorry, the county administrator, because he was speaking specifically to our lobbyist registration pieces, correct? I would like for the county administrator to look at that letter and provide us at a later date with some analysis of what's in that letter and what we currently do. And then from that point, we can have further discussion whether you want it to be at the retreat or in an agenda item. But I want an understanding of how everything he said in there compares to what we already do, and how it compares to what's being done across the state. Is that fair, Dr. Jackson? I think that's the starting point, and then we can go from there as to if we go to an agenda item or a full retreat discussion item. I'm sorry, say it again? Yeah, yeah. So, if we're gonna take that step first, had the county administrator look at the letter, he can meet with Dr. Jackson or whatever, or however you guys want to do it. You can send us an email or give a report, it don't matter to me, bring it back to us. And then at that point, if somebody wants to bring it up, we have a retreat, retreat discussion or agenda discussion, I'm fine with it that way. But I don't want to put it on as a workshop or a item before getting the full analysis of what's being done and what, and comparing to the state. That would be my suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Yes. What's it say? Okay. Dr. Jackson, that was not a full, I've been paying attention to your ethics ask, and what you gave us tonight was merely partial to the totality of issues that you brought. And I think what I hear Commissioner Maddox saying, that if there are other details to fill out this one narrow component tonight about registration for lobbyists.
No, sir, it's not. What I'm saying is, the basis of everything that he placed in the letter was related to lobbyist registration. We report ethically to the state, and I don't think he has necessarily with a problem with that as much as it is looking at the way we do our lobbyist registration and things like that. So, I want him to sit down with the county administrator, county administrator, or to either the county administrator, look at the letter, compare it to what's being done here, okay? Now, and compare it to what's being done to the state, send us a report. Now, if, when it comes back, if we want to have a discussion about an agenda item or a retreat discussion item, I'm fine with that. But I want that information back. I want analysis of the letter from the county administrator prior to us making that decision. And I think Dr. Jackson said that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Vice Chair. All right, finally, Mr. John Outland requested that we review our sale of the property on Proctor Road. It's amazing that Mr. Outland's email to us with respect to the Wilani property, which we were to purchase property there to build a park, and our commitment for the Northeast Park. It seems like we were to sell the Proctor Road, 100 acres, to purchase and pay for Wilani. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. Let me expand a little bit. I sent a clarification email to all of those that were copied on that email. Yes, consistent with board direction, we are selling that piece of property, and we're going actually through a process to facilitate the sale of the piece of property to an adjacent plantation owner. I think some of the concerns were about the future development of that property. That property, of course, was conceived initially for a park, and again, selling it or facilitating the sale back or to the adjacent plantation owner will actually result in lesser development than even a park. So I think the, the response was adequate to address the, the immediate concerns of Mr. Outland. He sent me an email back to that effect.
Okay. Is the sale still onward?
It is in, in the process.
Okay. All right. I, I wanted to make sure that we were sensitive to, and it was after President Obama's speech the other day about climate, that his, his words to us jumped off to me. Okay. Then finally, Commissioners, I ask for Mr. Lester Smith, who is going to be turning 100 years young on January 15th from 1922, and his family has asked for a resolution honoring Mr. Smith's birth, 100th birthday. We thank you very much. Now, gotta do some things right, Commissioner Maddox. Got to go to bed early and get up, you know, and work hard and get to 100. I hadn't gotten it, but follow me. I'm a legion, legion straight to 100.
Yep.
All right. And then to Mr. Harvey out at the North Florida Fair.
Mr. Chair, go and take that motion up, though.
All in favor of that previous motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously. Mr. Harvey is down at the fair, doing another masterful job. Want to give him a shout out. Wanted to encourage you all, if you've not been down to the North Florida, North Florida Fair, to please do so. Then finally, Commissioners, please note, our special session across the street, November 15th through the 19th. And I'm just wondering, County Attorney, is there, are there any issues of which this body should be advised prior to our reading anything in the newspaper? Are we targeted in any way with proposed legislation?
Section 3 of House Bill 1 and Senate Bill 2, which are identical bills, would prospectively preclude us from requiring that our employees be vaccinated if it passes?
Okay, very good. All right. Thank you very, very much. Commissioners, there are no other matters that come before us tonight. I want to thank the citizens who've come down. I want to thank the families that support us every week, every month. Shouts out to Commissioner Minor for his leadership over the past year, the stellar work of Commissioner Dozier. She goes and get it into details, upbeat and positive, optimistic views of Commissioner Welch and his 18th anniversary, his children's birthdays, and he even believed that everybody came around Thanksgiving because of him, you know. Amazing. And Commissioner Cummings, whose, whose skill sets continue to inform us, even as recent as a few moments ago, that clear insight on expungement. And again and again, you point and find the needle in the haystack on issues. Then that mean principle that makes, makes the children stop talking and do the homework and do you spank the children? Mr. Vice Chair, we got a principle spanking children out there. You said amen. Let's leave that alone. I'm gonna move on over here and sit by Vince. And then to the Vice Chairman, the best Vice Chairman in the whole United States, and he knows parliamentary procedure like he knows how to go around left tyke very well. And I thank you. To the finest county administrator, whose, whose talent and command of his job is second to nobody. And our county attorney continues to impress all of us, that she's a true legal beaver. And she's the kind of lawyer that you want, but you want her on your side. And I'm glad she's on our side. And to all of our complimenting staff, we're very, very grateful and fortunately in County to have you. To the citizens who are taxpayers and who live here, as many college students, we're grateful for all that you have given. And as we approach the Thanksgiving season, we encourage each of you and families, individuals, to reflect upon the blessings, wonderful blessings. It's like, how do you get five days of 70 degrees in November? But golly, we get that type blessing right here in Tallahassee. And Nick, your team is gonna do good. I know they coming, you gonna do some thing. And shouts out to those Rattlers. And we got some business to see about up in Pine Bluff and Sweet. Then we got some more business to go see about down in Orlando, and they may need me to help them see, see about those things. Ladies and gentlemen, we've enjoyed you, we're just filibustering. Dr. Jackson, we're glad to see you. Dr. Jones, and all the rest, God bless them. All right, good night.